Advisor's 28th day of October 2014 to order. We have Amy Watley, hope I said that right, from Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church to do the invocation. I'd like everyone to stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Lord, we pray that your wisdom would encircle this room and that we would know, God, how to best serve this precious place that you've placed us in. We pray, God, for a special sense of our calling and strength to work under it. I pray for these in front of me, Lord, that they would know your wisdom and your calling and they would have assurance of your presence with them in making these important decisions for so many under their care. I thank you, God, for all the ways that you have called each of us and I ask, Lord, that you would give us the power and the confidence to walk in that. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. I'd like to welcome everyone. It's nice to see everyone this morning and we'll move right into the agenda. We have citizens' time. We have anyone sign up for citizens' time? Having no one sign up for citizens' time, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda, minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Any corrections or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes out, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices.
I'll make a motion that we pay the invoices as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Any discussion on any invoice? Here or none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, Chair, but I was looking at you.
Thank you, Dr. Hausman. Motion passes.
I apologize. I was looking ahead.
Next item on the agenda, moving right along is old business. Mr. Dalton, we have anything on our old business? Okay, moving right along. Move into reports, American Rental Costs. Sherri Dillo?
She's not here yet. Actually, I told her and Mr. Russell to be here about 10 o'clock. I didn't expect y'all to be here.
Okay, we'll skip them and come back to them when they get here. Okay, we have Dr. Lee Brennan from the school board.
Glad I was here on time, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you.
Did the best as possible can.
We just skipped over you.
That's true. Just want to update you briefly. No major issues today, just some things I just want to highlight that's going on in the school division. I probably do this three or four times a year and just give you an idea of some things that are going on, some changes that you might hear about or some things that you might see that you want to talk about and I'll just go through this rather quickly and just let you ask any questions that you might have any time during this presentation. I want to thank you all, first of all, for your successful dedication to both Royal Retreat Middle School and Sheffield Elementary. I want to thank you for your attendance, for being there, your support, for speaking at the events. Mr. Reeves, thank you so much and just for, you know, showing the support and the collaboration between the two groups to get things done within the county. Most appreciative in both communities about all the success, all the popular talk that was given, just people were thrilled to death to have these facilities. So I think you'll continue to hear that throughout the year. I sort of went back two, three days later and walked through after all the hoopla I was over with, you know, to sort of get a sense and a feeling of how things are working. The kids were in the gym. They were actually saying, "I hope it's cold tomorrow so I can have PE in the gym." So they were requesting bad weather, either rain or cold weather, just so they could be in there. And the facilities are being used to their fullest extent and just everyone is extremely pleased and thank you so much for your support in that. You might have heard at the beginning of the year, all the ice cream coolers were empty in the cafeteria and I received numerous phone calls about this, said, you know, "We're not going to have ice cream anymore." And of course, this is all back to the same thing we've talked about for three years, USDA qualifications and what we're required and what we can do and what we cannot do. And the one thing that prohibited that, number one, it's not true. We do have ice cream, okay, but all offerings have to be less than 200 calories. So the manufacturers were behind just a little bit on repackaging their stuff. You know, people say, "Well, I won't be able to eat a Nutty Buddy and I won't be able to do the," you know, the things that kids like. You could get the yogurt and you could get the creamsicles and things like that, but it took the manufacturers a while to reduce the size a little bit. If you've noticed, Reese cups today aren't the same size you used to eat a few years ago when you paid double for them. Well, it's the same thing in the cafeteria. So we do have full service ice cream in the cafeteria. It's just that all offerings have to be less than 200 calories whenever they eat them. So if you've noticed also whole grain Pop-Tarts, I'll give you another example. That was another thing the students missed at breakfast and the problem was two of them were more than 200 calories. So now they're packaging with one Pop-Tart in the package. So, you know, it just took a while for everybody to catch up on this, but all offerings have to be less than 200 calories. So that's one of the problems. The 1415 school calendar, and I gave you a copy of it just in case you want to refer to it at some point, school's well underway, had a great start to the school year. You know, things are moving along rather quickly. It will be in November real soon. You can see some of the, you know, events and so forth that affects the school calendar that's been coming up throughout the school year. Of course, one of the big things I'll talk about in a minute is the Veterans Day celebrations, which are well celebrated in our county. We are in school on that day. We're closed on Memorial Day. That's sort of the, we closed Memorial, but we're open on Veterans Day. And we do a lot of education for Veterans Day. Our enrollment as of September 30th is 4155 and that number will be important to you later on when I talk about the budget, of how many students I budgeted for with state funding. And so we're pleased with that. The projection was around 4150 to 4160. You know, over the last five years, we're down about 60 some students. So, you know, we hope to, it levels off and the Weldon Cooper report that I received shows that we're going to sort of level off for a few years and then there'll be another influx in the future after a three to five year period. So we'll see how that pans out as the years go by. As I mentioned, Veterans Day celebrations, as you know, Royal Retreat, Spiller, Max Meadows, you know, traditional ones are going to be doing, but other schools have sort of got on board as well. You're invited to attend any of those. You know, some of them do it like a two or three hour thing. If you know a veteran, please invite them to go to their school or go to another school that's offering those types of celebrations. It's one that took my 88-year-old uncle last year, you know, and he was just absolutely thrilled to death. I don't know if he'll be able to get out this year, but it was quite an achievement and it's something where the schools really do a great job of honoring our veterans on this day. And the kids really take a part in it and have part in the program. So if you have questions, either check with me or check the local school and see when Veterans Day, Sheffield has one as well. So they're all over the county and we feel like we do a good job with that within the community. Instruction, the STEAM program for middle school students is moving right along, no pun intended, but we have teachers that are teaching in science, technology, engineering, arts and math and it's for the middle school age kids. We felt like that our exploratory program had sort of dwindled a little bit, so we started to put some teeth back into it. And these are programs where we have five different teachers who teach different sections to kids in the sixth grade, they get like six weeks, in the seventh grade, nine weeks, and in the eighth grade year, semester or a whole year of those products, you know, within the STEAM organization. It's all to do with, it used to be STEM, you know, science, technology, you know, and we added arts to it as well. So we feel like this will help strengthen our middle school program. These teachers travel to the three middle schools. They get consistent curriculum and consistent instruction in going through this program. Also at the middle school, we've increased our reading and our math to 90 minutes now. We felt like that those two areas are areas that are highly concentrated on in the SOL testing program, the NAEP testing and all the national testing norms that we look at. And we just felt like our middle school kids, the expectations have changed, you know, from third grade on up, of the amount of math and reading that they're required to know. So we have increased that instructional time within our current classifications, didn't add any new teachers, we just redid our schedules to make sure that all of our middle school students get 90 minutes of math instead of 45 minutes that they've been receiving in the past. As you all read and know about, there are some elimination of SOL tests in third, fifth and sixth grade, but just to let you know, we still have to do a local assessment on those kids. So just because the SOL test has been eliminated for those specific subject areas in social studies and reading, we still have to do a local assessment. One of the big concerns is that third grade reading being eliminated, not having a, or writing eliminated, not having a test there, would the kids be prepared when they get to fifth grade? Well, to let you know, we still have to do a local assessment and verify that the kids have the content knowledge in those subject areas, okay? So even though the state eliminated the test, we still have to do an assessment at the local level and verify to the State Board of Education that we've completed a local assessment that guarantees that they've completed the work. We're getting ready to go through SACS, Advanced Ed Review in November. For those of you familiar with that, it's a five-year review of all the goals, missions, plans, vision of the school division. This is an independent outside group that comes in and reviews everything within our school system from the top to bottom, from verification that you have legal counsel to verification that you're providing the amount of instruction that is necessary each and every day. I know some of you all are familiar with those and have gone through those in the past. It's a very large undertaking to go under this. Everything is done electronically now. It used to be done in a notebook that was about this thick, but now it's done electronically. So all of our documentation of what we provide within the school system is recorded electronically. This independent outside group of people of 12 people come in, they interview me, they interview the school board, they interview parents, they interview everyone and just sort of see what the pulse of the division is and it keeps you on track for accreditation. And of course, we are accredited by Advanced Ed and with County Public Schools. So that's a big undertaking getting ready to take place in November. We will have visitors in town for three days and they will be visiting schools, evaluating teachers. And this is an interesting thing, they're not, the evaluation system has changed. They're not necessarily going into the classroom looking at the teacher and the delivery method. That's our issue. Now they're looking to see, are the students engaged? That's what they want to see when they go into the classroom now. Has the teacher come up with creative plans to engage the students? So that's the one big difference. We have put in our nine-week grading period now. We just finished our first one. It's been a success so far. Both the parent and student advisory committees have been real thankful for this. They feel like it gives students an opportunity to catch up if they get behind a little bit. The six-week grading period was a little bit short for some. If they had something, they were out for a few days and they had a bad grade, they didn't have a lot of time to make up. But now with nine-week grading periods, it has allowed them to catch up and do additional work to make their grade better for that nine-week grading period. Block scheduling also, receiving the same reviews. The kids in the second year, primarily at the high school and our student advisory, they love it, especially in those years where they take really difficult classes in their sophomore, junior and senior year. They only have four classes to concentrate on. They're out the first semester, then they come back and take four classes the second semester. So it's really been, it's working well. There's no schedule changes, there's no alternating day. They take four classes and they complete those and then they start four new classes after the first semester. Now, there's still remediation built into this as well for all students that are not doing well. So we build that into the block scheduling day. And of course, we're continuing to concentrate on reading and math improvement. We are fully accredited, but we are warned at three schools in reading and math. So that's the concentration area that we're working on this year as far as instruction and academics are concerned. Administratively, school safety training for all personnel. As you know, workers' compensation claims, seems like you have them each and every year. So we really initiated a new and improved safety training, not only, and you think of that, you think of custodians, maintenance workers, but I'm telling you, teachers are the biggest risk of anybody. Climbing in chairs, putting up bulletin boards, trying to get in a chair and it has rollers on it and they fall and something gets hurt. So, and the statistics show that the number of days missed really affects instruction because of workers' compensation claims. So we're really highlighting safety within the classroom, not just in the school building, but safety within the classroom and within the school areas. We also now provide uniform critical incident plans for all law enforcement. You know, they've got plans of the building, they know how to react, we know the communication, we know the protocol for anything that should happen in With County Schools. We continue to offer our bullying prevention programs. We've stepped those up to increase bullying prevention programs in all the schools. And then Election Day, just a change in the calendar, this year, school will be open and we will be in session that day on Election Day. We've already met with the group who sets up the election. We've designated areas for them to set up their polls and we've talked to the principals about making sure the parking areas at that section of the building where they're voting would be open, okay? Open lanes for them to have parking spaces and to make sure that people who come might be handicapped have a close ample way to get in there. We discussed that back and forth two or three times, but we just felt like it really, we could pretty much exclude most of the places from the school day. So, you know, school will be open on Election Day this year, which is a change from what it's been in the past. Special education, you probably read in the enterprise about the Paze Lab, WCTC. It's a partnership with many where students with disabilities have life learning skills that they work on each and every day from counting, sorting, entering data, and we're trying to prepare them so that they will be viable in the workforce as well once they complete high school, whether with a regular diploma or with a special diploma, they would still have the skills necessary that they could go out and seek employment. It's been a great addition. They came and did a big article on that and all the different things. If you ever want to go by and see that, it's really a great treat to watch those kids work in that program. The ICAN program also at Scott Middle School, a program for middle school identified students as well. We continue to add programs so that we can serve those kids with special needs within our school division. And, you know, I can't thank the special education department enough that we feel like it's our responsibility to do everything we can to help those children be successful. We did decrease the halftime speech language therapy position by restructuring services. We have now an annual internal IEP forms audit process. As you know, the IEP is the driving force in special education and we are now auditing those IEPs. It's not just a written document that really goes unseen except between the IEP committee and the parent. We're now auditing every IEP that's written to meet federal regulations on that. New special education forms, two years in development process, maximize Medicaid reimbursement. You know, that's something as a school division that we focus on. Number one, it's funds to us, but number two, it's also services that are provided to those students that we can seek reimbursement for. So we continue to keep that as a part of our budget process so that there's not additional money that we have to ask you all for in the budget process. We also did receive a grant recently for behavior intervention and support. That's really one of the major things in special ed right now is how do you intervene with behavior? As you know, suspensions are not always the answer to the issue and a lot of times there are regulations on suspensions of special needs students. So we've applied for and received a grant, you know, for that amount of money and of course, we'll be talking about that as a part of a addition to the budget item once we receive the funds and go through that process. But the intervention, behavior intervention is what do we do prior to any type of discipline that we use on these students? So it's really, can be beneficial in that program. Technology-wise, again, we've replaced or updated more than 500 lab computers. You know, when you go into Sheffield and Royal Retreat, you all saw the results of that. And basically, computers, as you all know, become outdated and we have to keep a schedule and it takes about that many every year for us to update our labs to make sure they're available for testing and also for student instruction. Now, the majority of that money comes from the state. We've still received that. We hope nobody gets the wild idea to take that money out of the budget from the state. It's called SOL Technology Initiative money and it's been in the budget every year for about the last 12 to 15 years and that's the money that we use to replace these and keep everything updated. Of course, you saw some of the updated technology at Royal Retreat, Middle School and Sheffield. You know, now you have projectors that you just mount right above the wall. They don't have to be thrown from the center of the classroom, have students interrupting. They're called short throw projectors. Everything's wireless within the classrooms and things are moving along well and you saw the results of that. The e-learning backpack program, we had a little bit of a problem initiating that at the beginning of the year. The state would not approve the laptop that we wanted to use. They said it must have a detachable keyboard. You know, it was part of the old budget that nobody went back in and changed. And if you all watched any of the commercials on TV now, detachable keyboards that turn into a tablet or a laptop, either one. And the grant, the way it was written in the state budget prior to going back to McDonald's old budget, which was McCullough's non-budget and being approved, they didn't change the language for the backpack learning program. So I had to write a five-page letter to the state superintendent and get approval for us to use a tablet keyboard that now folds. And I told them, I said, "There's no difference. We can fold the tablet over and it's a tablet. If you unfold the keyboard, then it becomes a laptop." And they just, it didn't meet the criteria. So I had to write a five-page letter explaining to them why this was the best because basically we looked at it and detachables, that gives two things for kids to keep up with. And the technology had not been developed for this folding laptop keyboard tablet at that time when they wrote the, in the legislative language. So that was my problem, but we got it solved and we'll be starting hopefully the second semester at Fort Chiswell. Also, we plan to include in the budget next year enough money somewhere along the line to start a program at George With and Royal Retreat with the incoming ninth graders. This money was funded through the state and I'll be perfectly honest with you, you had to do bad in math to receive this money. And we know Fort Chiswell High School's math scores two years ago, that's where we got it from. Were not that well, but they did improve this year and we're continuing looking to improve them. That's where we got the state money due to the e-learning backpack program. Updated student code of conduct that allowed a pilot program, which now allow use of devices and cell phones in the classroom. It's been very popular with the kids, the students, the teachers. The cell phones are not permitted out for use during instructional time, but if you've been sitting around the table and you've had a question, pull out your cellphone and Google it and you can find it a lot quicker than you can go look it up. So the teachers now have the opportunity to allow students to use their devices in the classroom when it's for instructional purposes only, okay? And then during lunch and things like that, then they're allowed to use them and they're monitored without attaching to our Wi-Fi. We've got a way of making sure they're not connected to the school Wi-Fi. They're using their own data. Implemented online applications for employment, that's now in full swing. And also this year, we partnered with Virginia Workforce Connection for classified applicants. What we've been having a problem with were bus drivers, maintenance, custodians, clerical workers, and Mr. Thomas set up an agreement with the Virginia Workforce Connection and now all classified applicants that apply for the, through the Virginia Workforce Connection, Mr. Thomas receives an email and says, "This applicant meets your criteria." So it's really helped us in hiring those classified positions by getting applicants that might not necessarily apply to the school division because some people think, "Well, they just need teachers" and things like that. But we need other classified positions as well. So that partnership has helped us in finding a bigger pool and more qualified group. Capital improvements, continue working on the field house. It was supposed to be ready by the first game at Fort Chiswell. We had a donor in that area who donated a large portion of that, you know, to expand that. And it was supposed to be ready by the first game. We're now at game eight and we do not have it completed at this time, but we're continuing to work on them and they will not return our calls as of the last two days. And we went up there on site and they're not showing up. So, you know, but sometimes when you get some donated work, that's what happens sometimes. But hopefully it'll be finished. We did resurface all the high school tracks. They were all getting in pretty bad shape, so we resurfaced all those. We did repair the football home bleachers at Fort Chiswell High School. We had to put additional braces and put some new boards in on the home side. We potentially in the future, we've got a roof replacement on schedule. That needs to be scheduled. Also Sheffield and Royal Retreat remodeled and then we continue to maintain county vehicles within our bus shop and help out in those areas. Budget, lastly, you know, the FY15 budget, the reason I told you that 4155 would be important, we budgeted at 4150. So, you know, we're five students above the budget amount. So, you know, I'm not going to have to hopefully come back crying or whining and saying, "Oh, we didn't have the students." So we adjusted our budget figures to make sure that we would be within that realm and that's sort of our responsibility to look at that and see how it would affect to keep us from running short during the school year. So hopefully the rest of FY15 and with the governor's recent announcement that schools were going to be held harmless during any cuts this year, we hope we can make it through this year with no problem. Increased employee salary scale, I think that'll be a request you'll see. I think we've gone through the last two years without any and I think it's time that we need to really consider what we do for our employees. I know we had, we have a good salary scale, but we're getting caught up with by others. And, you know, by going the last two years without any nominal employee increases and continued health insurance increases and things of that nature, we need to look at that in the future. We always put projected health insurance increase, I don't know any other way to put it, but it's always projected to go up. Wouldn't dare put a rate down at this time. State budget concerns, I'm sure you've read that for FY16, there'll be some major adjustments. Saw an article just this morning where they met in Fredericksburg in Spotsylvania with local legislators and they said that they do not know that they can protect public education and funding for the FY16 budget year, which, you know, will be coming out by the governor in December. So what will the state budget concerns be for next year? Don't know yet. The governor puts out his budget proposal in mid-December, so I have a better idea of what the plans are for, for public education during that time period. Capital improvement, phase two, we'll be looking at that in the budget for next year as well. Be looking at A and E design fees to get ready for phase two of the construction, capital improvement projects for With County, which really puts us through another year designing and determining what we want to go with and then be the next year we will be looking at funding to try to complete phase two of capital improvement. I went through that big long list pretty quickly, I hope, for you, but I just get to come every three or four times. So I hope it wasn't too boring for you and certainly I'll entertain any questions about any of those or any other points that you've got coming up through public, With County Public Schools.
Because of our schedules, I've been missing you for a month now. I'm busy, you're busy. Are we on schedule for the EMT program to be in place next year at the vocational school?
Yes, we are, we're planning to do in January a needs for what the kids that are interested in signing up for that class. We've already, we had a meeting at school board office, Mr. Dalton, myself and the director of the program. We know what we need to do as a division. It's going to be one of our course offerings, okay? And then what we've got to determine now is how many kids we have that want to take the class and then that will determine how we go forward with it after January.
Well, all I've heard in comments is it's a great idea from, from the community and I think the board supports that wholeheartedly and it will really help the students, I think, in character building and being able to have a vocation that they can carry into the workplace. Thank you, sir.
You want to ask any questions?
Yeah, a couple things. One, I want, I want to tell you Retreat and Sheffield are great.
Good.
Yeah, I thought that Royal Retreat was really nice and everything like that and it is, it's great. And then going to see Sheffield was just, yeah, just wonderful to have that whole new theme. And I'm sorry, I don't know her name, but I'd like to go on record and say that little girl that sang the National Anthem was absolutely wonderful over at Sheffield. And if we can find her name and insert it somewhere, that would be great. She, she just did a wonderful job. Let me ask you a couple of questions. I know we're talking about testing on the state of, as far as No Child Left Behind, the requirements are still just math and reading, okay? Are all three high schools on the same block schedule?
They are not. George With High School is not, but they plan, preliminary plans are, George With did not, they have a single class, first period and seventh period, and they did not feel like that this was the year that they wanted to make that change either because of band, chorus, some of those areas. And so, but the plans are that they'll all go from that route in the future.
The other thing, I just, you know, concerned me a little bit. I mean, this is just me as a, as a person, but, you know, the cell phone thing, a lot, a lot, a lot of kids have their cell phones, but there's still a lot that don't and, you know, their families can't afford it or, you know, they choose not to have it or whatever. Is it something that is addressed so that those kids don't feel like... Is it something that is addressed so that those kids don't feel like they're being left behind, or they, you know, that peer pressure is, because if I can't afford it and Steve can, and he pulls out his cellphone and I don't have one, you know?
Yeah. It's a good question, and that's something we talked about whenever we go through it. We do have laptops available, you know, in the classroom that kids who do not have one or choose not to have one can use, but there's no assignment that's geared specifically for that use within the classroom, and it's only within the classroom.
Right, I understand.
That there's no assignment that they are, that they do not have an option to do differently and receive the same grade. So there's no instructional, as far as grade, academic grade discrepancy whatsoever. And then the teachers try to provide, have laptops in the room for any kid when they want to use that project. They're supposed to plan ahead when they're going to use those and have a laptop available for those students, if available. If not, they said that they would use sharing, use team building, you know, sit in groups if they noticed that that's a large problem in the classroom. But that was, that's a very good question. It was something that was brought out whenever we looked at it.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Brenner?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, I just mentioned, appreciate the senior survey. Mr. Gaines worked with us on getting it out. We have got into Mount Rider, they have given us the results back. We will get a copy of that sent to you just to give you all some information.
Sure.
But sent several questions out today, and we'll get it out to you all as well. One of the things was top three career choices, was nursing and medical, professional office one, agricultural number three, that was the only top three from all the schools. And had an open-ended question, what things did you approve, and ironically, lunches were the top thing that came up. I think that was the box. And then cellphone and dress code policy was probably the number two, but it didn't have enough specifics to say if it was too tight or too loose. We'll get those to you, and appreciate y'all working with us on getting those out.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And we sent out the other survey to all of our employees as well, through you all, so.
And also, thank you for addressing the parking issue during election day, because there are two voting polls over there, West Whitfield and Blackwood, or, excuse me, Royal Oak. And, yeah, it was a little bit crowded last year, and people were having some difficulty. So thank you for addressing that, that'd be great.
We plan to eliminate that this year, because it was an issue. And just to tell you how kids can be kids, Mr. Hausman, talking about the young lady at Sheffy, and after you all were gone, okay, Mr. Newman and I, and I sort of made one more round, I think I forgot something in the gym or something, went back to get it. She was in there just like a typical kid, playing kickball and just laughing and giggling and sweating, and, you know, like nothing had ever happened. You know what I'm saying? So that's the thing about kids, she can stand up there and perform to that level, but when it came time, all that was over, she was back playing kickball, you know, and having fun in the gym. So, and I stopped her again and thanked her for doing that.
She did great.
And we'll get that name tomorrow this evening.
Got you right.
And I would like to also recognize the music class, I mean, they've done a wonderful job, you know, singing. And I've also had a lot of positive feedback from the schools, and parents are just wowed of Sheffy and Royal Retreat, and they're still very pleased with the work we've done.
We feel like we definitely got our money's worth out of both those projects. And Spiller, Scott, and Speedwell will get the same results.
Do you want to have any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Brenner.
Thank you.
Okay, next report on the agenda is Sam, Treasurer's report.
Oh, I'm short and sweet.
Boy, you're short.
On our consolidated account, present with $43,871,358 in all of our accounts. The general fund balance for this period was $25,302,592 for a general fund. And then for our collections, I ran a report off yesterday, it's, y'all, it was a little different. What was in the board packet, it wasn't hardly any collections yet. But as of yesterday, we've collected $1,957,961. About 11% of our budget's been collected in the first month. So we've got quite a bit more to go in the next month and a half, so hopefully it'll come on in. And we have been, we've been busy, we've been inundated with the, our old cars. I guess a good description is what some gentleman sent us from North Carolina and said, you've got to be kidding me, I haven't had this car for 20 years. So it's been a lot of exonerations on that stuff, and it may be February before we get them all worked, it's just been so many of them that I think as of yesterday, we had the ones that Faye's gotten over to us, it's in the 1,500s already, and her girls have, she'll tell you that stacks on her desk, and then we had two big trays of mail came in, all of them personal property that were non-forwardable. I've gone through them all, we counted them, I ran them through the postage machine to count them that way. And then we've separated them for Faye's office, the ones that have the old cars that need to be exonerated, and then the ones that just no postage, I mean, no forwarding address on them, people have moved out of state and things like that, it's difficult. So that's a low priority, the high priority is, for us, is the people that walk in, they got the problems, we're trying to get those squared away. So some of these other things are going to be, like I said, it'd be up until next year we finally get all this stuff worked up. But that's the way it's going. Anybody got any questions?
Sam, when do the escrows usually come in? Is that mid-November or escrows for mortgages?
We're getting a couple of small ones now, but the big ones come in usually the last week, so we're pretty well inundated with those things too. But they all come in usually about the last week, they keep their money as long as they can. So typical bankers, you know how you are.
Yeah, that's what I was figuring.
That's right. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam. Fay, do you have anything you would like to say?
Just that we've got stacks like this of exonerates deal that we haven't gotten to, probably another 3,000 that we haven't gotten to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Ms. Walker a question? Faye, this is a personal question. I've got an old car on my, you know, the taxes next to nothing on it. If I pay those taxes and get it taken off at DMV, it won't show up next year.
But if you didn't have that vehicle, you don't need to pay it.
I understand. But for the amount, it may be easier to pay then.
But you'll need to tell us which one it is, so we can take it off next year, because it will show up next year if people don't tell us which one to take off, it will show up next year, because we're not going to take anything off of our records.
Okay, I thought, I thought that was what you owned on January 1st.
It is. But if you don't tell us that those title vehicles, if you don't tell us they're gone, and you don't go through DMV.
No, I'm talking about going through DMV. You're saying I need to go through your office too?
You still need to tell us, because it'll show back up, because we're not going to remove anything that hasn't been corrected.
Okay.
My understanding, Fay, that we have developed a list, and you're going to maintain that list.
Maintain that list.
And then you're going to download from DMV those new vehicles that are.
But those old ones will stay on?
She's got her own list of the old ones.
Okay, so the old ones will stay on unless we take them off. All right, and so then, once that whole thing is cleared out, then you're only going to be dealing with newly titled vehicles. Okay, I understand then, I'll take care of it.
We have several people here, I had David Mark, the title-only vehicle on our system, so we know which ones they were, we've got an asterisk. And several people come in and, you know, I said, well, you need to go get these taken off, if you don't have them. And they say, don't we have this one and this one? So, but it helps us identify what we're dealing with. I believe we had a David Mark report.
Well, honestly, I was just thinking that for the small amount that it was, it would be easier for me just, Fay, than have to, you know, put another exoneration on you all, but I understand what you're talking about, so I'll take care of it.
Go to rear, Ted, again.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one comment, Fay and Sam both, for your offices, the feedback I'm getting, your offices along with the DMV, very easy to work with on these issues, so lots of compliments on how the Commissioner's Office, Treasurer's Office.
We're afraid to go to DMV right now.
Well, I go to DMV in my other role, and they're doing a great job too, and I haven't been cussed yet, I've been to DMV, so I guess.
They were pretty bad that first week. One gentleman called me, said, I got in line over, what's that little fish place in there? He said, I got in line there and stood for three and a half hours. Those girls, I don't know, were mad.
Well, the feedback I've gotten from people is that it's been very easy to take care of the vehicles, and your offices are doing a good job handling it.
Any other comments? Okay, moving along, Sheriff King.
Good morning, Sheriff. I guess I was lucky on the vehicles, there were only three on mine that I didn't own. But I still haven't understood how DMV put my ex-wife's title vehicle on my name. I took exception to that. Give you a trash report. Since the first of year, January 1st, despite the hiccups we had with the vehicle, this year, calendar year, we've collected 98,850 pounds of trash. And we're having a lot of, a whole lot of repeats, the areas that don't have trash stations where you can explain it as to trash blowing out of the vehicle. It's just the citizens in that area that just apparently don't have a lot of pride in their community, just to tell it like it is.
Sheriff, on some of these sites that people are dumping, are you still using?
These are dumping, these are out the windows.
Out the window, but are you still using the cameras on?
You can't use a camera on those. I mean, you're talking two, three miles of road. I mean.
You were asking about dump sites.
Yeah. Well, areas where.
Dump sites, we are using cameras. And they, every place we put a camera on, has either resulted in dumping stock, or someone's being issued, wherein we can identify who's doing it. But, you know, that'll be something that we continue to work on. It's not going to be an easy fix when you have a population that has no qualms with one of McDonald's bags.
What is, have some of those citations come to court yet?
If they come to court, by law, if they've been found guilty, I can't reveal that record.
Well, I mean, is there any success rate? You can say that there is a success rate of the ones that are coming to court.
We've talked to them about that, but we can't tell them what to print. If they pick it up as an issue, which I wish they would, just make everybody aware of it.
I'm asking you a question. Are we doing pretty good in court?
Oh, as far as conviction?
Yeah!
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I misunderstood what you were asking.
Okay. So it is working there?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Judge is on our side when it comes to litter. It's pretty cut and dried. If it's observed, he will find them guilty. We did receive three new vehicles last week. One of them was to replace one that I was hoping that we could make it to the next fiscal year on, but it died in its tracks and had to be towed away. So we're going to have to replace that with a new vehicle. We should get quite a bit of life out of it, because it's an investigator's vehicle. One issue that has, and it's raising a kind of alarm flag to me as far as budget goes, and this was something we brought up to the General Assembly before they passed these laws, mental health transports. It is not unusual, since July 1, when they went to this bed registry, that if a local facility doesn't have a space, they go to the bed registry, and then we have to take the mental health patient there, if they are deemed to be detained on temporary detention order. It's not unusual for us now to go to Norfolk or Petersburg. Catawba, Salem, and Stanton have become commonplace. The General Assembly passed these laws as usual without making any consideration of where we're going to have to take these people. They've been gradually shutting down Southwestern State, which we used to use continually. It was rare we went to any other place except Southwestern State. Now they don't have that many beds available. If I send somebody to Norfolk or Petersburg, I have to send a second person with them that's off-duty, and I'm having to pay them overtime in order to accomplish it. Yes. So you can see why I'm watching that closely and why I believe it may be an issue. We used to be reimbursed by the state for mental health transports. We are no longer reimbursed by the state. Of course, now, the things that I'm no longer reimbursed by the state, we probably don't have enough time today to get through all that. But that is something that's down the road, I see, is getting worse instead of better. So next time y'all have a meeting with the legislators, since the sheriffs couldn't get through to them, if you could, please, address them about a facility in southwest Virginia that we can take people to. I pity these poor guys from Lee and Scott County when they have to take somebody to Petersburg or to Norfolk. Two weeks ago, on one night, I came in, I had four deputies working, three were on mental health transports. And the closest was Catawba, which is over the mountains from Roanoke. So please, when you have your legislator meetings later on in the year, try to get them to address Southwestern State, the facility there, the physical plant is there, it just Other than that, that's all I have, unless y'all have a question.
Do you want to have any questions for Sheriff?
Sheriff, can you provide us the details of how many of these transports?
It'll take me a while, because it'll actually involve a hand search of the time sheets, but we can provide the figures for it.
I think we need to know the number. Let's see, let's see how much of the impact.
Well, Senator Kane, I believe, was at Big Stone Gap, made the comment that there were eight state capitals closer to Big Stone Gap than Richmond was. Well, he was mistaken, it's actually nine state capitals that an officer from Big Stone Gap could be in before he could be in Richmond. Virginia doesn't stop in Roanoke. We've got to get this over to these people in northern Virginia and eastern Virginia, who have the facilities and where the money's going to. We need it as well.
Are you advocating the state of Franklin?
I'm sorry. The state of Franklin. No, I don't want to splurge into West Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I see Ms. Sherri Dillo is coming from American Red Cross, will back up on our agenda and get you to come forward.
Hello, and I apologize, my time said 10 o'clock, so sorry about that.
That was right, you were right.
Okay, okay. My name is Sherri Dillo, I'm the executive director for the Red Cross, the Woods River chapter, which actually encompasses you guys, so you're one of us. I wanted to tell you very quickly what we've done in the past year in your county, and our goals for the upcoming year in your county, some of those actually in the next couple of weeks, so we want to put you guys on the know. In the past year, up to June 30, 2014, we took care of seven fires in With County. In those, of those. In those, of those fires, it encompassed about $5,000 of direct expense amounts. Those covered the housing for the first couple of days, clothing, food, a toothbrush, those things that you need at two o'clock in the morning that you've lost when your house catches on fire. I need to say a huge thank you to the fire chiefs in this area. They're our point of contact. They're the person who reaches out to us at two o'clock in the morning and says, "Hey, we have this fire and we have a family who has no insurance, they need your help." So, we appreciate them. I can't even express to you how much or how little we would do without them to help us. I want to give you these as I talk, if you don't mind. Is that okay? So of that goal of taking care of those seven fires in the past, we wouldn't be working with Red Cross if our goal wasn't to stop those fires, hopefully before they ever occur. So as part of that, in rural retreats on November 15th, we'll be doing a fire canvassing. And what you have in your handout is a door hanger, and we'll knock on each door. We're not going to be aggressive, we'll knock once, if they don't answer, we'll hang it on the door and walk away. We're going to spend less than five minutes talking to each person and we don't go into the home. It's a simple packet of, hey, these are fire-related issues, ways that you can stop fire in your home, and just to reach out to say, "Contact us if you need help." You know, we have ways of getting fire detectors, we have ways of helping people before the fire occurs. My contact number is in there, along with our local disaster volunteer, Roger Hudson. You guys may know, he actually lives here, which is really cool. You guys are lucky. There are very few counties that can say that they have the disaster manager for the entire region living in their county. So you guys honestly get quick help because of him. We're thankful to have him, but you guys are lucky to have him in your area. I want to tell you about, I'm sorry to jump back and forth, but I want to tell you that his contact number is also in there, so they can, on the day of November 15th, and I know this happens, my husband's a deputy in Bland, and people get a phone call, you know, they'll say, "Hey, there's someone at my house, I just want to check with the sheriff's office" to make sure that they're who they say they are. So we want to let you guys know that we will be there. We'll all have Red Cross vests, we will not go into the home, we'll spend less than five minutes at each home. Why did we choose rural retreats? Because honestly, that's the highest amount of fires in your area. We looked at those numbers and we said we need to help them first. Now, does that mean we won't be working with the town of Withfield? No. Or other areas, it just means we hit them first because they seem to need it the most. So, our second goal for this area in the upcoming year is to increase volunteers. The more volunteers we get in this area, the quicker we can help people when they need help. We want to be able to send them out within just a couple of hours. We have up to 24 hours, we don't want to take that. Because obviously, if your house is just burnt out and you have nowhere to go, you need a hotel room pretty quick. So we want to be there quickly to help you. If you guys have suggestions or ways that we can maybe increase that number, we would appreciate that. Please, please tell us. You guys know your county better than we do. Feel free to call me and let me know what I can do. And that is honestly all I have to say. In a nutshell, we're here for you guys, just let us know what we can do. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dillow.
Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. Dillow?
Can I comment? Maybe our fire rescue committee, they have the meeting of the fire chiefs and rescue captains, the board of directors, but Ms. Dillow, the meeting, she can meet all the fire chiefs.
That would be good.
Wonderful. We would appreciate that invitation.
Thank you, Ms. Dillow.
Thank you.
Moving right along with our agenda, we'll go on committee reports. We have the water committee report.
All right. The water committee met on October 21st, 2014, and recommends approval of the following leak adjustments. Do I need to read all this into the minutes, or can I just?
There's just four names in the matrix.
That's kind of what I was thinking. First one was Ann Blair at 407 Felt Lane, and her adjusted bill will be 101.76. You want to do all these, can do all four of them together? Okay. The second one would be Chad and Kim Deans at 157 Foxfire Road, and their adjusted water bill will be $90.95. The next one would be Philip Lewis at 235 Brook Avenue, and the adjusted water bill will be 11414. And the last one is Tammy Baker at 114 Ricky Road, and the adjusted water bill there will be 26717.
Okay, we have a motion from the water committee to approve them in these water bills, or come from committee, doesn't need a second, is any discussion on any one of the adjustments? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Aye. The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Anything else from the water committee?
Dr. Ano.
Okay, moving around along, we have a recommendation from the Budget Committee.
We have four items to recommend. The first is to amend and appropriate $1,167 for payment to Grub Funeral Home for indigent remains of Mr. Foster.
Okay, we'll take these up one at a time. Does it need a second? Is any discussion or any questions on the payment to Grub Funeral Home?
On this issue, I think previously we asked Ken to fill out some papers for reimbursement on this, so there may be some reimbursement back with Ken and the veterans and social security. But, so that's, so that's not a full cost, we should get some reimbursement.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Our second item is to approve the carryover request of $1,716 to line item 3506-48241 of consolidated dispatch.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Is any further discussion or any questions? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Third item is to release the lien on the tester property in Newtown and to authorize the county administrator to sign the necessary paperwork.
Okay, is any questions or discussion on this item?
I've got one comment. There's 18 or 19 more of these out there that the 10-year term has expired. I've talked to Kenny Attorney this morning about it. I guess whether we ask for permission to release all those at this point in time, do some research and get these, or bring each and everyone back to the board for proof.
Dr. Housman?
These were sort of artificial liens, weren't they?
What they were, we did a housing project in the early 2000s. We had a, for those that had income, that could make monthly payments, they were making monthly payments. After one year, the housing board that we created over there is now gone, voted to ask the board to agree with this and voted in board minutes to forgive all the payments. The liens were to protect the homes so that Salel or Scott or whoever had their houses we had, for a period of time, you wouldn't sell that for profit. It was a 10-year lien, the way I remember it, and at this point in time, my real opinion is that it's just gone away, but everybody's saying, "Well, you need to sign these forms with clear titles." So it really was just a thing to make them hopefully keep those properties in that individual's name for a period of time.
And they've all met that 10-year requirement.
Yes.
Then I, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we just release all these liens.
I have an amendment to the motion from the Budget Committee to approve doing away with all the liens on these properties that's over 10 years old. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any other discussions?
I have a question. Did that also include authorizing the county administrator to sign those releases?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I say release whatever legal documents to do that.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Then our last, last item out of Budget Committee is to amend and appropriate $1,900 for the DMV stops.
Come from committee, doesn't need a second. Doesn't need a second, is anybody else have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
The same, but those are working pretty well. It's been.
Hurry, will you? Let's hold back.
Moving on with the agenda, we got the county administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, I would first, it's Mr. Russell there.
Okay. I will back up here a minute. Mr. Russell, you're right, you're coming up to the podium, please.
Morning. Just a few updates as we get, if I get started. Of course, right now, we're in preparation for the snow season, stocking up salt, get all our equipment ready to roll. Mr. Hale, the, I'm not sure if you've been made aware, but that one-way street request in Max Matus was approved, and we should be getting those signs up in the next couple of weeks.
I'll aware of that, thank you.
And, construction, the Route 830 Bridge in Black Lick, we will be shutting that little dead end down to replace the bridge, probably in two weeks, and it'll be shut down for about 30 days to replace that bridge. We have made, we do have a detour route in place to where nobody will be blocked in, so that's, moving along, and other than that, I'm here for your entertainment, so.
Okay, I'll open up the board for questions. Mr. Russell?
Just one thing, real quick. Jeff, I sent you an email, I guess it was yesterday, about the signage at Granite Christian, and Pastor Davis has agreed, I think, to just do the regular signage, so thank you for your work on that, I appreciate that.
I'm glad we were able to satisfy him, we'll take care of that.
On some safety issues, Jeff, I talked to Andy about since the modification and improvement of the road across Armbruce Hill Mountain, if I had any success of getting that road striped.
I know he has been working with traffic and engineering, but where it's at right now, I'm not sure.
Well, paint truck was down there in the district yesterday, and those signs, one-way signs on the road, and then I talked to him about curtailing those cars that are going the wrong way at exit 80. I don't know why we don't have more accidents down there than we do. That one gas station, it looks like to me, two no-left-turn signs coming out of there would keep a lot of cars from going the wrong way on that four lane. We missed you in Bristol the other night, but that young man, it's over traffic. While they were there looking at, they actually got to watch one do it.
Right.
So, hopefully, you know, get a sign as soon as we can, or we'll call midnight supply and they'll move one.
We, I know Andy had took Mr. Bechtel to traffic engineering. They took him out there, and like you said, they did see one go the wrong way. Now, directly across where you pull out there is, there are two signs saying, "Don't turn away," but.
But they're in the median.
Right. But, now, he did look at it, and what he, what he, or if he is going to do anything, I haven't talked to him about it since then, but I will follow up on it.
Jeff, could you explain a little bit on how the cuts in the six-year, the money in the six-year plan is going to affect us?
Are you referring to the cuts we took this year, I suppose? Last year's six-year plan, the estimated allocations given to With County, and do you all have a copy of the plan, or would you like it?
They don't have a copy, right?
I've got a copy.
Okay.
If they buy one's a copy.
Thank you.
Now that, what I just gave you is this year's plan. The year before, the estimated allocations, projections that we were given to allocate was 5.3 million dollars. However, between then and this past July, the new allocations of six-year plan, we were cut in With County 2.4 million dollars. That was just a, the projections didn't hold true to what they thought they were, there was a shortfall in the revenue, and as a result, the six-year plan suffered pretty well statewide.
Almost, what, Jeff, almost a 50% reduction?
Yes.
And that happened in every locality?
Pretty well. Now, some localities.
I'm not being argumentative, but northern Virginia, they cut 50% of the.
It's my understanding statewide. Now, I don't know the specifics, but statewide, they was a pretty significant. It's just the revenue didn't show up that they thought was going to show up. The taxes didn't work out. However they generate this revenue, the money didn't, what they projected didn't hold true, so.
But that, that reduction of 2.4 million is over six-year period?
Right. Well, six-year plan, I understand that. As a result of that, also With County, your CTV formula money. Now, that was a new, you can see it on the six-year plan, that was a new, that was a new type of funding administered by the CTV Board for unpaved roads, paving the unpaid roads. And a qualification at that time, in 2013, last year, was, the road had to have a minimum traffic count of 200 vehicles a day. This year, they lowered it to 50 vehicles a day. So we also took a cut in that because that opened up more roads to qualify, so they had to spread that money out from the 200 vehicles a day down to the 50, the ones that So we took a cut, the CTV formula money went from 500,000 to, two years ago, to 180,000 this year, so. And some localities did see an increase in that particular type of funding because roads that didn't qualify under the 200 now qualify. So they, they did get a little bit of that money, whereas With County had to give a little bit of it up. That was just a. That was just the definition of the roads that qualify.
Did we have any roads that, that then qualified that, that didn't before? Because I would think that we would have some roads that were between fifty and two hundred.
Specific roads, I'm not sure of, but yes, you do have roads that are gonna utilize that funding.
Okay.
Jeff, we've had this discussion. That change in Archer Road, which the boards already acted on, sent you a resolution, and it showed up here as a three point three four million dollar project. How, how will that impact With County now that it's not a three million dollar project?
Overall impacts, as long as you still allocate money to that project, you'll get it done a lot quicker. However, the money still isn't there as of now to, to do the project.
Maybe I'm just being totally thick-headed here, but we know it's not gonna be a three million dollar project. Is that right?
Right.
So why does it stay on there to look like a big number that we're not gonna ever use? We don't get any more money because it's that way, do we?
No. Your allocation stays the same. But what we're looking at, if you'll look at the previous funding that was on Archer Road, under that column was one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, even though we can change that three point three million down to what I'm guesstimating, four to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, by moving it to a rural rustic road, you'll notice that this year, two thousand fourteen and fifteen, we were allocated, we allocated sixty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to that project, which, when you put that with the previous funding, now we've got sixty-five thousand dollars on Archer Road. Next year, what we've got projected is another sixty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to it, which will bring the total up to one hundred twenty-seven thousand. So you can kind of see, as you progress across, more money each year goes towards Archer Road, but we cannot start that road until we have it allocated, that it will be fully funded the next year. So even though we've reduced the price tag, the money still isn't there.
So you're saying, before any construction can start on Archer Road, it'd be twenty-six, twenty-seventeen?
As of right now, okay, going across in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there will be a total of sixty-four thousand six thirty-nine. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen is a hundred twenty-seven thousand. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, you'll have three hundred thousand. Two thousand seventeen and eighteen, it will have eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars as of what we had on the plan this past year. So I'm sure we will adjust, but if we don't change our allocations, it will be fully funded and buildable in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And as such, the rules we have to work by, if it's fully funded in that year, then you can start construction the year prior to it.
So you're saying twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen, seventeen, two more years, we could start construction. And these allocations, I mean, this is where we work with the board, that we can put money on whatever project you want to. So it, you can change it from year to year. It's not, nothing set in concrete.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President.
Jeff and I talked the other day, there's six on Miller Street, there's sixty-some thousand on Miller Street for some other night, but in this year's budget or next year's budget?
Next year's, seventy thousand.
So I think what I heard Mr. Russell say is he's not gonna have enough money for any of those roads to build, except to finish up Dunford Road. But the board could decide that if they wanna build a road, to reallocate that money towards Archer Road, the next one on the plan, which would be double up the money this year, double up the money next year, which could allow you to start the next summer, right? Because the following year, you reallocate that money, it'd have to be fully funded.
Now, based on the projections, and that's, you know, I want to, I want to make that clear, these, these are projections. We're not guaranteed any money other than this year's money that was given to us two thousand fourteen, fifteen. That's the only money we're guaranteed, and as we've seen from last year to this year, they're certainly subject to change. They can go up, they can go down. From what I've heard, I wouldn't look for anything to go up between this year's plan and next. But based on what we were given this past year, Dunford Road, if there is a surplus left over when we get through completing it, that money could be allocated to Archer if you so desire. Miller's Creek, next year, we've got seventy thousand going on it, and the next year, two thousand sixteen, is eighty thousand dollars. So considering that, if next year, you've got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand total for Archer, if you put the seventy thousand dollars into that, you're looking at two hundred thousand. And that's all the money that I see in your plan, and then the next year, you've got two hundred, then you're putting a hundred and seventy-six, that's three hundred and seventy-six thousand, and the eighty thousand off of Miller's Creek to it. You would probably have enough, if you allocated the money from Miller's Creek to Archer Road, you would have enough to, possibly you could start it next year.
Well, if we'd done that, you know, would that be enough money, like, to do the grading and the stone and let it set over a winter before you paved it the following year in twenty sixteen? But, I mean, then you would, would that be enough money to get the grading and the stone and stuff cut down? If we reallocated the money from these other projects?
You can't, you can't, let me just make sure you understand, you can't start a project regardless until it's fully funded the next year. So you're saying, would we have enough to do the grading and the stone, and then wait till the next year? You know, the rules we have, you can't start a project till it's fully funded the next year.
So you're saying, we may have enough next year if we move all this money to fully fund it?
If we, if we transfer, if we prioritize Archer Road and say we wanna take Camiller's Creek money, if we wanna take all your allocation and put it towards Archer Road, based on the projections I'm looking at, it would be fully funded in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. And therefore, we could start it in fifteen and sixteen, which is next year, after next July. Now, that's based on the allocations. The estimate I give you, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's a shoot from the hip estimate. That's a guideline that what rural rustic roads normally cost us.
When, when will you know if you have any money left over from Dunford Road?
It'll be next spring.
Next spring.
Because if, if you'll notice, Dunford, it's not fully funded until next year. But as such, we were, we were able to go ahead and start it this year. We've pretty well completed the grading, got the pipe in, we're gonna put the stone down, we're gonna let it set over the winter, settle out, and then we'll finish surface treating it next year, and then we can close out the project cost. That's when we will know where we're at on the money.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
Jeff, if, if you as administrator declare a safety issue with those pipes that don't work on Archer Road, where does that money come from? The first thing that's gotta happen to Archer Road is drainage planned, isn't it?
That would be a priority of the project, yeah.
So if, if they're declared a safety issue, what does that, how does that impact this?
The only thing, if, if, if those pipes washed out or whatever today, I would have to expend my maintenance budget to replace them. And then we wouldn't have to absorb that cost in the project cost, as they would be new pipes.
It'd be a maintenance issue instead of a construction issue then.
If they washed out, yeah.
Now, since we started this process, do you think that now there's much vertical change of what we're gonna do? And is the pipe down that Red Hall Road, is it included now?
Joe, I'm, Paul, I don't understand your question.
Okay. When we started the process, we talked about paving place or rural rustic. Down there where the creek is higher than the road, with your idea of what's gonna happen there, is there gonna be any vertical? Is there gonna be any fill put in there, or just full of ditches?
If, if we have fill material, then we can try to raise the grade some lot, but it, I don't see any major change in the elevation of the roadway.
Okay.
It, that would put it out of the scope of a rural rustic project.
So that, that's the upper part where the flooding occurs. Now, down the other end, where that drainage that comes down there and goes by the fish hatchery, do you think that replacing those pipes is now part of that road's future? Or are we just gonna surface treat over it and let it continue to flood?
It would be within the project limits of what we're looking at here, right? So we will take a look, and we have our drainage division come out. They size all the pipes, and any pipes that's inadequate, historically give trouble, or need a replacement, we replace them in conjunction as a part of this project.
Well, the reason we went down this road, when you and I met, and we tried to make those pipes wider on Miller's Creek, I was educated that a pipe is a structure, and the structure people made a decision that the pipes were wide enough. Remember that one?
Yes.
So why would those pipes down there on Archer Road not be a structure and be able to get them replaced without it being in this, in this construction budget?
There's qualifications, they have to be a, gets kinda complicated. It has to be, I believe it's seventy-two square foot total, and I'm not, is it a double line of pipe we're talking about? I'm not, I don't recall.
Well, if we used y'all's formula in the contributory area, I don't think we'd have a problem meeting that qualification. We've got two registered engineers here that, and yourself. That's a tremendous drainage, and historically, it floods several times a year for the last twenty years. More development.
I don't think, to answer your question, I think what you're asking me, if I'm right, is those pipes, should, should their replacement be a part of the bridge division since they are a structure?
Yep.
And I think the answer's gonna be no.
Okay.
Unless they are ready to fail. Once they fail, if they are a structure, then it would be up to them to replace it.
Well, the term of fail is, do they work, and they don't?
Well, we've got, we've got pipes, we've got bridges all across the district in the same situation, you know, the deficiency ratings, they need replacement. The thing is, where are you gonna prioritize your money? And I don't think we're gonna win the battle of saying, we, we're gonna build this road, we want these pipes widened out and sized up. I don't think they're gonna look favorably about funding that just 'cause we want a new road.
Well, there, there are plenty wide enough, there are just not enough surface area open to carry the volume of water, and it becomes, road becomes a dam, and it flows over it. So, you know, that, that's a mute question. I was looking for the way to, to get the money to start working on it, but it.
I appreciate you, you're thinking outside the box, but I don't think they would buy that.
Well, your manual don't let you think outside the box very often, so.
I like my job.
I could've been brain-dead sixty years now if I'd have gone my job to work for VDOT. The manual does it all, doesn't it?
Well, it's there for a reason.
Thank you.
Somebody else have any questions for Mr. Russell?
You won't complain?
I'd, I'd have a, I'd have a point on Dunford Road where you come out of the subdivision there, the second subdivision, that they were, they could ditch right there. And the president of that homeowners association up in there said they were dragging their bumpers when they were going in there. And I talked with Mr. Cook about it, and he told me that the road needed to be built up. But it does have a low place at, right at the bottom of it there, and then the road's higher than, than that area. I don't know if he's anything to do with it, but I appreciate it.
I'll look at it, and one thing we try to do is, any entrance that ties into our road, we do need a swell before you start up entrance. And that kind of, when you have drainings coming down the entrance, it hopefully hits the swell and into the ditch, whereas if, if the gradient of the entrance comes straight into the road, it has a tendency, all the water goes across the road. So that is a design, and, you know, that's something we can look at, see if we can make an improvement, but we'll take a look at it.
I did my job, I totally mind bringing it.
We'll look at it, see.
I guess, we have, as a resident ministry, we have a little bit of leeway. I think what he's talking about is taking, I guess, a trailer or something up or a car, when they're long, long wheelbase, it's popping on the back there, actually it'll catch a trailer. I understand the landing zone is, it's like brown now, sometimes you just can't get it, so.
Right. And we've got entrances like that everywhere. They're not desirable, but they, they do occur, so that's something we can look at and see.
I think that's what Cory was asking, if we could look at it and see if we could deviate it just a little bit. So it's pretty hard if you're pulling around there with a trailer and you end up, the trailer tears off of the road's block. So what have you accomplished?
Okay, I had a, I had a guy call about a culvert on Raccoon Run. It's where Kennel Lane comes into Raccoon Run. I'm not sure if it's washing out, or if they just need, if people are running off in it, or what. I can give you his number if you wanna contact him, or if you wanna do it. It's Kenny Harmon, and it's six-two-oh-eighteen-sixty-three.
Yeah, that's up in the water, pretty good.
He just called yesterday or the day before, just about it, so I told him, as far as I knew, you, you were coming for a beating today.
Actually, we, we got a water tank up there, that may be a little bit of our problem. It's worse than that, it's the bottom.
All right. Well, then you know about it now, too, so fix it.
Yeah, we've known about it for a long time. Every time we have a major rain, it ends up worse than that. Every time we have a major rain, it ends up worse than that.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Russell?
I have a question for you. Don't know if you have any answers. Any idea where the Spiegel project's at? They've surveyed it for about the 50th time again.
They, we're, it's on, supposed to start next summer, actual construction.
They came out and surveyed, put stakes on the edge of the road, they didn't last very long.
See, it is moving forward, but probably next summer before they actually start construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff, for coming, giving us update, explaining all of this cuts and stuff that Transportation Board and the governor's has cut. I would like to say last Thursday, when was it, Joe? Me and Mr. Hale went to Bristol to the six-year plan as far as interstate, some of these major projects go. They, Richardson's passed this House Bill two that is going to affect a lot of things that, how they've scored and how projects are moving forward. Deputy Secretary of Transportation promised me that the PE money would be spent on exit 80 down here, 77 coming out of 81 and extending the lane, double lanes all the way up underneath the bridge. But the meeting was mainly about how the Department of Transportation was going to score each one of these products, what was the criteria, that how they were going to set forth the scoring as far as, you know, which products got priority in the state. And, you know, what we heard was traffic count, congestion, safety, economic development would be part of the scoring process. And Mr. Dalton, please jump in if I misspeak on anything, but that was the gist of the meeting that we had last week up there on the 22nd. Projects that were fully funded, it wouldn't affect, but all the other projects that wasn't fully funded, it would affect. And it affected all of the, every county in the state. They're trying to make it more fair for each product, project to be scored and give us out here in the western end of the county maybe the same benefits of some of the projects that we have on the same as Northern Virginia. But Northern Virginia has extra money because they got special tax districts up there that this won't affect. That money will be spent up there unless they're, they want state money. And then they go back into the pot to be reevaluated and re-scored with everybody else in the state. And that's mainly the update that I have on that.
I appreciate you all going up there and representing us. It's good, I mean, it's good for them to hear, hear from us, so.
Jeff, a couple of comments out on the interstate. The flashing hairs of the rockware really reduced the wreckage.
Right.
And the placards and signage that are on the table seem to be working. Several people have indicated that, number one, the flashing lights, if you're getting off 77 coming north and heading 81 where we're having all the trucks turn over, running too fast, if there could be some signage on that ramp, slow down, or those flashing lights with the rockware, you know, there could be, the placards be extended out on the interstate a little bit better, give people a little bit more time to get the weed out of the way.
And I also talked to Donnie Nessari about adding two more placards in the road, a little farther back, and they're going to come and evaluate that. The 77 and 81 come back to maybe right pace, northbound right pace, exit 77 down that hill somewhere and around Mark 4 Honda heading southbound 81 North 77, a little farther back, you know, where people could see. I know it's helped a lot, I think we put one more set a little farther back than how to give people, especially on very, very busy days, holidays and stuff, more of a chance to get over into right lanes that are...
More advanced of a warning to where they can negotiate.
So I've got to call Donnie this week. I told him I'd talk about it.
All right. As always, if y'all need something, you've got my number, my email, we'll get done with it as quick as we can, so.
I had one other question. You know what happens on Major Green Road on a holiday weekend? The more advertising that thing gets over there, the more turnout they have. I drove it last week and the road's good, but could we get Donnie to any time they grade that road, evaluate whether through that village there where the bishops live, if it don't need cut, don't cut it. Pull both them levers back and pick the blade up, because that's all that happened this last time. The treatment y'all had put on it had made it smooth, almost like it had been shot. But evidently, there was a substitute on the grader and he pulled all that dust out of the ditch up over the treatment. And as soon as those log trucks and pumpkin haulers hit it, it was dust. So a little bit of understanding there about that problem would save y'all another trip back over there and I hope that got treated again. But it's really a lot of traffic there right now between that logging operation on top of that ridge down there and every how many million pumpkins there are down there. That's a lot of trailer loads of pumpkins coming out of there. It's just unusual for a road to bounce like that. Then you add 10,000 people attending the Halloween thing. That road wasn't ever meant to handle 1,000 cars a week, must less than 10,000 in two days, was it?
I'll have that discussion with Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to thank you. The Adopt a Highway program, is it still in effect? I mean, like organizations or groups or whatever?
As far as I know.
Okay. And if a family wanted to adopt like a mile stretch of road, that's doable?
As far as I know.
Well, do you know who you get in touch with about that?
If you can send me an email, I think we could, we used to handle it out of our office unless something's changed, we still do, so.
Okay. I'll send you an email then. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Mr. Dalton, you read you want to take a recess. Or is any other board member would like to have a recess for a few minutes before we Hearing that, Mr. Dalton?
First item is a letter, DMP, about animal friendly plates, and asked that we accept that and amend it appropriate, the amount of money, 165 bucks, I believe, to the animal control budget. And our intention was to transfer that to the Welfare League or the animal group that's helping send it to animal shelter.
Okay, come on.
I would make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to transfer 100, what is it, $165? To the animal control budget? Any other discussion?
Normally, have we divided that up between organizations or is, I'll be going to the one that's been helping us?
This is such a small amount, we just give it to the one group. They write us a letter and say certify that they've been using the money for sterilization.
Any other discussion?
Can I do a roll call vote? Dr. Housman?
Uh.
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 Chair, but, next item on the agenda, I mean, Mr. Dalton?
Next item is a disinformation, a letter to the Health Department. They approved that change order last time of making its grounds, getting everybody's signatures. Next item is a letter of obligation for the attorney, Phil Thomas, the Battle, the Bond Council, the Jackson School Project. We could have a public hearing on that on November 12th, I believe it is. Because, I don't know, November the 19th, so I would ask you to accept the proposal from Phil Thomas.
Entertain the board for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Say.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Uh.
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 Chair, but, next item.
Here's a letter from Jennifer DeBrul, VDOT, about new sharing and reallocation process. As far as I know, we do not have any of the bits that deal currently, but for reallocation. We do have a couple of projects that will be, as soon as we finish the preliminary engineering report on the Rogers Park connector road, we bring forth the next agreement for that project. Just to remind you, the next item, Chamber of Commerce, annual dinner meeting, November 17th, 24th. Back to that, just left Mark in there. Next item is a resolution, 2014 National, this is my office a couple of few meetings ago, we could change the, insert the Wood County, y'all's consideration.
Mr. Dalton, you want to go ahead and read the resolution?
I can. Resolution, 2014 National, opposition to housing illegal aliens within Wood County's jurisdiction. Whereas the United States southern border is currently being invaded by tens of thousands of illegal aliens. And whereas rather than protecting this union and repelling this invasion, the United States government has chosen to relocate illegal aliens into sovereign locales, sometimes without their respective local governments' consent. And whereas we, the duly elected governing body of Wood County, have sworn to act in the best interest of the citizens within our jurisdiction. And whereas we wish to stand in support to our federal and state elected officials who have publicly expressed similar concern over the recent action of the US government on this issue. And whereas we wish to encourage our neighboring jurisdictions throughout southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, and western North Carolina to likewise support the rule of law and to stand with them if they undertake similar resolutionary measures. And whereas we wish to uncompromisingly support our county sheriff in his/her's continuing efforts to enforce the laws and maintain the peace in Wood County, including his/her's diligent enforcement of the existing immigration laws. And therefore, it be resolved, Wood County Board Supervisors officially oppose the housing of illegal aliens within its jurisdiction unless charged as federal or state criminals in house accord. Now therefore, be resolved, that this resolution be adopted by the Wood County Board Supervisors on this 28th day of October, 2014.
Okay, hearing the resolution, I open the floor for, up for a motion.
I make a motion, we accept this resolution.
I have a second.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second, accept this resolution. I open the floor for discussion.
Well, I will discuss. You know, a couple of things. This one, you know, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of the tone of the resolution, although, and I think that it treats more of a symptom than, you know, than a problem. I would, you know, I'd fully, you support a resolution that's written in our own language and what we would like to say. I just don't want us to get in a situation like those hundreds or thousands of people that, you know, signed the petition about the dog situation. I mean, you know, if this is what we truly believe and want to do it, okay, if, you know, maybe we would like to, you know, to rewrite it.
Anybody else have a comment?
I agree with Mr. Housman that if you feel like there's something you want to vote for, at least let it be the language of Wood County instead of another board and we copy it. I would recommend that we highly consider tabling this for further study.
Any other comments?
I guess, Mr. Hall, the methodary procedure, if you're making a motion to table it, then I think you do that, but they make a table, take precedent over the initial motion.
What did you just say?
I said, either make a motion that you want to table it or not.
Well, we got a motion for the group now, can you make it?
It does, but a table, a motion takes precedent over the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'd like to make that motion, we table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table the resolution for reconsideration.
I will second that with the proviso that we look at writing something in our own language.
So the steps would be, I guess, to have Mr. Farling review it and rewrite the resolution?
Or the two gentlemen that asked that be tabled provide us discretionary language to have it like it.
I'll third that motion.
I agree with you, Mr. Hall. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second to table this for reconsideration and a revamp of the resolution. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Uh.
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 And last item is the, they go legislative program. Here you have the items and priority and positions they've taken. Don't need to go back through those, but it seems that they're in parallel with most of the discussion our board supervisors have had and hope that we would support it at the vacant conference.
I hope everybody has got a chance to read through these. And I got a packet today, it has some, of the Environmental and Agriculture Steering Committee, it has some revisions and some requests for additional legislative positions on... and some requests for additional legislative positions on dams. I haven't had a chance to read through it yet. I just opened it up and took a glance at it. I would like to, Mr. Dawkins, go through it with you, and I'll make that information available to the board before we go to the annual conference and get y'all's input on the new items that's, that's, a couple of counties just want to add some additional positions. Anything else, Mr. Dawkins?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Farling, the county attorneys report?
One thing that we haven't addressed yet in this meeting, I talked to the county administrator earlier about revising our email policy, and there's been communication between the county administrator and the county attorney's office at least about the proposal to have to do that. So that is in process as far as some kind of revision going on. The administrator also informed me that they're working on a revised personnel policy. They're doing a request for us to revise our personnel policy, which could also include language in there about server and email and stuff like that in personnel policy. So that is being addressed. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that county staff are working on that, working towards that goal, trying to solve that problem. So that's all I have to report.
Mr. Dawkins, would that be appropriate, send that out to the Personnel Committee for their review when you get it done? Any other thing, Mr. Farling?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving right along. We do a board supervisor report. We'll Black Lake District first, Mr. Dr. Housman?
No, I have nothing at this time.
West Whiffle?
I have nothing at this time.
East Whiffle?
Nothing at this time.
Port Chiswell District?
Nothing at this time.
Ned Mines District?
Do you have a call? Mrs. Hudson, I'm on a water meter, and I think that they don't want that out. Do you know anything about it, Ms. Hudson? She claimed that the water meters was put in back 30 years ago, I guess, for the free, and they can't find her meter. She don't know if she got one or not. That don't charge her $1,000.
In 1981, we had a park that housed community development block in Manhattan. Part of that was to provide free water meters for everybody that signed up. God only knows where those applications are.
She claimed she was on that committee. She was probably.
She was.
She was on it.
Her and Suzie Grove, Mrs. McGee, and Ernest E. Lampkins was on the committee with me. And, but that was part of the grant, but I could not tell you if there was a meter there or not. It's a choose.
Well, I paid him back. I referred the call to him since she's on the water committee. Former county employee says he knows where the meter is.
There should have been one. We put in, we put in all new water lines, rehaved a bunch of houses, and went up and all the way out to Brock Avenue and over Ramsey Mountain and all those places.
I think she's Virginia Avenue.
Yeah, I know where Francis lived.
She says she's always paid a sewer bill, but she's always used her well and hadn't used the water, so nobody's ever uncovered it to read the meter. But current county employees tell her that there was never a meter put in because it ought to be right here. Well, a meter can be a lot of different places. Where it was convenient that day is probably where it got put.
Bill and I would go down and look. I would imagine there's one there.
Well, let's let the guy that knows where it is put the stake on, and then y'all go look. It might be under some shrubbery that's been planted since 1981 or whatever.
Maybe it will have.
That's all I have.
If all of our problems were no bigger than that, Coy.
I was heading for them, but then Mr. Bill.
It's Spiegel District.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I just have one thing. Councilman Hunley, Tommy Hunley, contacted me and sent me an email concerning the residents on Berchsmill Road, several of them are wanting water. I don't know if we need to do a study, see how many customers that's on Berchsmill Road from 21 all the way back to the town limits.
That'd be fine. They have pretty terrible orange looking water. There's a couple of them okay water, but most of them have orange looking water. It comes and goes.
Well, I lived in that area for 20 years, and my well was contaminated. I had to have a chlorinating system on my well. I know the water in that area's not too good.
But I think that's probably one thing, we probably need to talk to the town and see if we can enjoy if we look that. They've got a new park, or are they putting water in their parks? It's probably one of those 20 things we need to go talk to the town about, because that's, we'd have to connect with their system, I think.
Well, as Spiegel Phase Two comes down that hill there, of course.
Now, we're looking at going out a little ways over towards Sherris Town, whatever you call it, commonly known. Going out that way is a phase two in that Spiegel project, but that's nowhere near Tommy Hunley.
No, it's...
He's on the other side of Berchsmill.
Yeah, I mean, residents had contacted him instead of contacting us on requesting that we...
Well, Mr., there's two guys on Berchsmill.
Mr. Sheriff's, is that right?
Yeah, no, I don't think that was his name, but we do, had a little petition, I think, somewhere. They go, we're limited, if you know where Ronnie McGovern lives on Berchsmill, go up in the per, that's about as far as we can get with pressure.
I do know that there's one person, and it may be Mr. Shelton, that lives. I mean, they've got a water line all the way through there, through the woods and stuff, and it's it down to the town.
Yeah, it's coming up to, I know where you're talking about. It goes, it's coming up across the salt rock, and it's back through the woods, across the end, there's either two or three houses, a long ways back.
But I told Councilman Hunley that I would bring it to the board today. Okay, it, ends our reports, so we'll go into new business. The first item on the agenda, new business consent calendar. Entertain a motion.
I move we adopt the consent calendar.
I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is Ridgell County Genealogical and Historical Society.
Well, they wrote a letter to us a while back, and I wrote them, responded to them, and now they've provided the information I think that's necessary for the county to develop an ordinance and have a public hearing. Mr. Farling, we need to write that ordinance that the board so directs to allow them to be a tax exempt organization for this property called Main Street.
So we would be making a motion to have a public hearing?
Yes, develop an ordinance.
To develop an ordinance, right, and have a public hearing on the ordinance about this organization becoming property nonprofit. I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is Ruhr Creek Voluntary Emergency Service. Mr. Dawkins?
Pardon me. The, we have two items, both the Ruhr Creek Rescue Squad and the Ned Mines Rescue Squad are in the process of renewing their agency license. Protocol we set up is that in the future, all these will come back to the board, but I see nothing in either application. Martha, did you make copies of Ned Mines?
I did.
We just asked for permissions to execute these documents so they can have the extension. They did, they did give granted a 30-day extension.
Right, until November, the end of November. So I'll make that motion that we, we accept these from the certification for retreating from Ned Mines, and that we authorize, yeah, Mr. Dawkins, to go ahead and sign them.
I have a second.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is appointments. We have one appointment for the Ridgell Community College. I open the floor for nominations.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Andy B. Crockett-Stark to that board.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Andy B. Crockett-Stark to the Ridgell County Community College Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Appointment stands. Next item on the agenda, we have two amendments for the Joint Industrial Development Authority. I open the floor for nominations.
For one, from the Port Chiswell District, I'd like to nominate Wesley May of West from Pandrive, employee of Volvo.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Joe, just being curious, what's he doing with Volvo?
Well, he's not a truck type Volvo.
I can answer that. Mr. May replaced me as head of logistics and warehouse at Tuffall Truck.
So he can be a helpless man there. Trucking company, if they, that'd be good.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay, we have more, one more appointment. I open the floor for nominations.
I was given the name of Dicky Morgan as nomination for, from the Spiegel District.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Morgan's a former professor, teacher at WCC.
He's a civil engineer at the Ridgell Community College when they had that program. He's also owned a construction company, and oversaw that for many years, grading road construction, and currently he's working with construction company as an escalator engineer here.
So as far as focusing on economic development and infrastructure and stuff, he will be an asset.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Appointment stands. Next item on the agenda is going to closed session at 1:00 PM for Personnel Matters. I'm going to recess this board meeting until 1:00 PM.